Stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to our Tuesday morning meeting of the County Commissioners, September 10th. My name is Andy Hunt-Housen. I'll do some introductions up here. We're waiting for Commissioner Payne. She is on her way, I believe. To my left would normally be Commissioner Rolf. He is out of town today. And further left over here, Brandy Spangler. She'll be taking care of us today. Thank you, Brandy. Greg McNally, our Director of Planning and Community Development. And over here, Nico Hash, Deputy County Attorney, and Carrie DeRozier, who is the Director of Human It's Human Resources. I was gonna almost said Human Services. That's not right. Human, Human Resources. And Commissioner Payne. Welcome, Commissioner. Commissioner Payne is here. So, good.
Now.
We now have a quorum established and we can move forward. I want to remind everyone, there is a sign-in sheet at the front as well as agendas, so please sign in prior to leaving today, so we have a good record of who's attended our meeting. We will start. We don't have any consent action items, Carrie, so you're off the hook, but we will start with item number three on the agenda, which is Task Order Number Two between Lewis and Clark County and Tri-County Firesafe Working Group. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. So before you is Task Order Number Two. As you're already aware, Tri-County Firesafe Working Group has been contracted by the county to perform mitigation assessments and mitigation work for the county when grant funds are available. Earlier this summer, we found some additional funds through DNRC where we secured $5,000 worth of funding that can go towards getting extra wildfire assessments done. So, Task Order Number Two is a follow-up to Task Order Number One. There were already assessments done in the Marysville area. The additional $5,000 will go toward an expanded area. Uh, let's see. That, oh. Also includes Lake Helena, South Hills. Still, anybody in the Marysville area if they are interested. Lincoln. And, uh, yep, that covers it there. So, uh, anyway. Grant funding has already been awarded. This is a task order to then allow the work to take place.
Great. Thank you very much. How about questions, Commissioner?
Um, no real questions. I'm hoping that people are seeing the benefit of taking advantage of this project because this is the season that we're all breathing the smoke from and, uh, I'm hoping we can do everything we can to get the rest of the people in Lincoln, Lake Helena, South Hills. And even the people not in the South Hills, but all of us to, to pay attention to this. So, thank you for moving this along.
Yeah, absolutely. So, the, the assessments will be free to property owners. Tri-County Firesafe Working Group will come out and do them for them. Uh, you're left with a prescription, a, a document in hand that says, you know, what's best practice on your property to protect it from wildfire. It's a great list of, um, not only things that you can do yourself, but also things that you may need to hire to have done. And then Tri-County Firesafe also has some other programs to help out with that if it gets to that level, too.
That's great. And, um, anything for, Commissioner? I just was gonna comment and maybe get your comment on this as well, but last night at, at the Fire Council, Lois from Firesafe Work, Fires, Tri-County Firesafe Working Group, hard to say fast, was, uh, talking about the challenges they have and they're having with, uh, you know, consistent financing, especially for projects. But right now, they do have this money for assessments and it's really a great opportunity for people to get an evaluation of their property and really understand what they can do to mitigate potential wildfire risks. With hope, I'm hoping that there's money coming down the line. And she said there's some grants that are out there that they're hoping to get. But I guess what I was gonna encourage, if there's any way we can assist, um, and I see our our grants, Director of Grants and Purchasing in the, in the audience as well. Um, and I know we have been, um, really open to that and looking for ways to assist them in trying to secure some more grant funding that would allow them to really get projects going on the ground as well. They've been a great partner over the years and the, kind of the money fluctuates, comes and goes and, um, different avenues about how, how we get that, uh, to uh, really play out on the ground. So, just a, an encouraging comment, I hope that we're, and I know we are, trying to assist where we can and work together. So, maybe just speak to that a little bit if you'd like.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, you know, the wildfire risk assessments are a very important part to that. So, when we can get assessors out on properties, then we have a better feel for the amount of work that needs to be done. And then we have a better estimate for the kinds of grants that we have to go after to get the, the, uh, work projects, boots-on-the-ground kind of stuff going. So, this is a really important step in that, uh, we collect all of this data from Tri-County Firesafe. We have, um, conversations with them, plenty, about areas of the county that have had more assessments done, um, identified need, and then we can go after grant funding that can do the construction aspect to it.
Great. Thank you. And if anybody has questions about this or, or, uh, wants to follow up and ask questions, how can they do that?
Yeah, so they could reach out to us directly in emergency management. They could reach out to Tri-County Firesafe Working Group. Uh, they have a website, tcsfsw.org, or also firesafe, uh, it's firesafehelena.org. We'll get to them as well.
Great. And they can find you on the county website?
Yes.
Great. Excellent. Anything else, Commissioner?
No.
How about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Any public comment? All right. Hearing none. Is there a motion, please?
I move that we approve Task Order Number Two between Lewis and Clark County and Tri-County Firesafe Working Group as presented by Mr. Kyle Sturgeon-Simon.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the task order as presented. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a contract between Lewis and Clark County and Preserve Montana. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Pam Attardo. I'm the Historic Preservation Officer for Lewis and Clark County in the City of Helena. And I'm here regarding, um, a contract for the old Lincoln Cemetery. Uh, there are three historic grave fences in that cemetery and one and a half of them have been completed. And so, this will complete the other one and a half. This was last, um, summer. Preserve Montana was up there with, I was with them as well, working on the fences, and they will be back again to finish up. Um, as they were, they're using, uh, restorative, um, actions as much as we could. We used what was there, but these are, these date to probably the 1870s. Uh, so there's not much left of them, but we are restoring, we are rebuilding them as what they, what they look like originally. So, this is a contract in the amount of $6,120, um, dollars. And, um, the contract period is, is basically through the end of October.
Great, thank you. Questions, comments?
Um, just, and a question. It's outside of the parameters of the, um, Old Lincoln Cemetery project. We, we went up there and toured up there and it was pretty amazing, um, to think that that's where the town used to be and that. Um, anyway, I, and I've seen these old cemetery fences and so I know what that's talking about. What I was concerned with is, is there a fence around the perimeter of the cemetery?
There's a partial fence around the cemetery and that was constructed by, um, the Forest Service. There's a jackleg fence that's around the rear and the, uh, well, if you're standing in front of the cemetery, it's on the left-hand side. I don't know what directional that is. Um, so I, we put up some, um, a couple of years ago, uh, MCC and myself and Preserve Montana actually put up some bollards, some stone bollards to prevent people from bear, trying to bury people in, in the historic part. The new, you know, the newer part is still active on the, on the right-hand side and the, the left-hand side is historic. So, there's just that one area that's in front of the, basically the front of the bill, of the, um, of the cemetery that does not have a fence. I did contact the Forest Service and they, they don't have any additional funding to put a fence there. But that may be something you want to think about.
Well, sufficient unto the day are the problems there. Let's get these old grave, the wooden ones, taken care of today.
Thanks, Commissioner. And I would agree. You did a great job. We've gone and seen the work that's been done, done so far. It's been really, uh, impressive and interesting. And I, I don't, you know, the Forest Service, I don't think has any further responsibility for the ground. It is ours now.
Yes, that is correct. Former, yeah, former Forest Service property.
So, uh, if there is any interest in fencing it further in the future, it'll probably be on us to figure that out, some sort of
Yes.
grant or volunteer process.
Yes. Um, one thing, though, the Forest Service is still working on a national register nomination for the cemetery. Um, so that's still in the works. That's part of that MOA that they signed back in, I think it was 2017. Yeah.
Okay. Great. Looking forward to see this in work.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Nope.
How about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay, seeing none? Hearing none? Is there a motion, please?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I moved, we approved the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Preserve Montana as presented by Pam Attardo.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the contract as presented. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay. Next item on the agenda. It's agreement between Lewis and Clark County and Trigon Road LLC. If I said that properly. Hopefully, I pronounced it close enough.
Mr. Commissioner, uh, well, Chair, Commissioners, Connor Fitzpatrick, Lewis and Clark County Elections, Elections Division Supervisor. I'm assuming you're pronouncing it right. Uh, I've been using, uh, Trigon Road, Trigon Road. Uh, it's a company out of Wisconsin and apparently they're named after a, uh, area in the UK um, that I guess the founder's, uh, lineage comes from originally. So, fun fact for you there. Uh, but returning to business specifically, uh, this is a subscription agreement for a program called Election Worker. Uh, this is going to help my office and I, uh, fully schedule our elections judges and temps all the way through the election. From when we go to, uh, start putting together ballot proofs, all the way to packing it away for retention purposes. Uh, I spend unfortunately, uh, a lot of time scheduling our elections judges for the polling places for our federal elections. Uh, this is gonna help me a lot with that. Uh, right now, our current scheduling process is based out of Excel and email. This is going to more or less combine the two into one. I'm gonna be able to email out of this, uh, build schedules within this, make sure that people are, uh, signed up for shifts that they're scheduled for so that we're all on the same page and hopefully I'm not having to find last-minute replacements for people at the polls. Uh, we had to do a little bit of that with the primary. It was less than fun trying to wake people up at 7:00 AM to try and get their butts over to the polls. Uh, but we found a few. We got lucky, I think, hoping to avoid a similar, uh, issue, I suppose is the way I'll phrase it, for the general. Uh, a lot of the contract here was built with input from IT. And, uh, I think this is why Dawn is in the audience, but Dawn Temple from IT is here, I suspect, to answer any questions? Possibly. Uh, Connor driving a bus, all kinds of fun. Um, so, if you have any questions on any of the contract, uh, I can speak to the half where, uh, we utilize the software, but then, uh, Dawn from IT can also speak on the portion of, uh, IT's inputs such as the, uh, cybersecurity insurance and all those items as well.
Thank you. Commissioner, questions for Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Um, Mr. Fitzpatrick, do you, how is this an experienced group? Have they done this for other, uh, local election people?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, yes. Uh, they are experienced to the tune of when we did our demo, they had 48 other clients. Uh, so they're kind of newer to the field, but their background comes from, uh, running HR software since 2003. Uh, so, query them a lot on, okay, how many elections have you done through this process or this program with your, uh, local partners? Uh, some states actually elect their, uh, governor in statewide positions in, uh, quote-unquote, off years. So, uh, either odd-numbered years or midterm election years, whereas all of our statewide races, for the most part, are alongside the presidential election, as y'all will see on your ballots here, uh, in the next month. So, they have had large elections go through these, uh, customers and they have utilized them successfully. Uh, they have picked up a couple of other folks, um, as we've gone through. Uh, I actually was chatting at convention with, uh, Flathead County and they're interested in using the software as well. Um, so, being that they have a smaller customer pool, 50 customers, so to speak, uh, if we need a new feature, well, that's suddenly 2% of your customer base is asking for the thing and that's just one customer. So, they have been very, uh, clear that they are ready, willing, and able to add new features, uh, if requested and have even gone so far as to, uh, discuss prior, um, features that they've added at the request of one elections department or another, uh, from their current client list.
Okay, further?
Please.
Um, we, um, hear a lot of, um, concerns about the integrity of our elections. And there are many people who are convinced we should go back to paper ballots, hand counting, and I'm concerned, would they have a basis for expressing a concern about the, sanctity of the information? Will it be kept safe by these, by this company?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, uh, the company has it in the contract that we own the data. So, they're essentially, uh, just the gatekeeper for that. And one of the things I want to push for is, uh, very specific, uh, logging credentials moving forward. Currently, that is something they're looking at building, but is not quite set up yet. But on the county side, it's gonna be something I push heavily for. Now, to bring that back to your overall discussion of, you know, the sanctity of the election, uh, this is scheduling data. So, uh, this is only getting, this is going to be data that is volunteered to our office by the elections judges and the temps. So, what times they're available, uh, their mailing address, their name. Uh, this is also information that is, uh, publicly available through the voter registration record as well. So, and it's not necessarily, uh, directly, uh, personally identifiable information, but it is a lot of information that is potentially personally identifiable. Uh, so, yes, we're going to be keeping a very strict eye on the security, uh, of this program and make sure that it's up to snuff. And that's why I've got, uh, IT helping me make sure that we are good to go on this. Uh, hence the requirements for cybersecurity insurance and things like that, uh, that were brought in by IT into this. Now, if anybody tries to make a claim that this is affecting the sanctity of the election, well, this is just a scheduling program, has nothing to do with the ballots, period.
And that was, I, I guess that was kind of the basis of my concern is that so that this company can look at the identity of the voters, but not not at the ballot itself that has been voted.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, uh, this program's gonna be entirely separate from our voters. So, the program that we utilize for, uh, essentially all of our voting needs is Elect MT, and that's provided by the Secretary of State's Office and overseen by the Secretary of State's Office. They have very robust multi-factor authentication protocols, uh, all kinds of backend security, and they have, uh, a gentleman by the name of Austin Lindsey is, uh, constantly uh, trying to figure out, okay, where do we need to make sure our security is still good at? This is going to be solely county and solely for, uh, scheduling elections folks' purposes. Uh, so, it's going to be up to the county to make sure, hey, we're doing all right on the cybersecurity front, checking in with the, uh, company from time to time, going, everything looking good. Our data is still good, uh, et cetera, et cetera. But again, very clear delineation. This is essentially, um, if you want to consider elections judges and election workers generally an asset, this is an asset management software more than anything. Uh, whereas the ballots and the, uh, sanctity of the election as a whole is on that Elect MT side and, uh, overseen by Secretary of State's Office programmatically.
Thank you, Connor. I think that's cleared up a lot in my mind, so.
Thanks. Good. Yes. And organizing software to work with your, uh, election judges and election workers. Yes, not, uh, anything to do with the other side. So, that's good to know. All right. Anything further, Commissioner?
Nope.
How about public comment on this item? Public comment? Any public comment on this item? All right. Hearing none. Commissioner, is there a motion, please?
Um, Chairman, I move that we approve the agreement between Lewis and Clark County and Trigon Road LLC as explained by Mr. Connor Fitzpatrick.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the agreement as presented. Further discussion? And just thank you for the explanation. I'll leave it at that. All right, Commissioner. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And before you leave there, uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick, uh, just a reminder to folks, I think that on the 26th, you're gonna be coming back. Just give us an overview of how things are going, uh, things to look for the upcoming election and all of that. So, uh, we'll see you then, right?
Uh, Mr. Chair, yes, absolutely. September 26th, I will be back here, uh, going through where we're at with the election. Uh, I will keep it short. And so far, things are going well. You need to update your voter registration, please do so ASAP. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is a grant application to the Montana Disaster and Emergency Services. And Dawn, I think you're listed as the the presenter. Good morning. Oh, there you go.
Good morning, um, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne. I'm Dawn Temple, um, IT Operations Manager for Lewis and Clark County, and I'm here to present, um, a cybersecurity grant that we have, um, in process. I think it's for $22,500 and it includes two things. Cybersecurity training for our staff and then an intrusion detection system. Uh, cyber training to monitor and help protect our technology assets. And then the intrusion detection system to help with network monitoring and management, uh, to keep the bad guys out. Uh, the best thing for you guys that you want to know is there is no match required on this grant.
Great. Great. And just from the notes here, I think it's, uh, $22,250.
Yes, okay.
Just want to get that right on the record. Okay. Thank you very much. Questions, Commissioner, about this?
Um, no, this is pretty straightforward, it seems.
Yes, thank you. All right. How about public comment on this item? Public comment? Any public comment? All right. Hearing none. Is there a motion, please?
Chairman, uh, I move that we approve the grant application to the Montana Disaster and Emergency Services as presented by Dawn Temple.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the grant application as presented. Further discussion? Thank you. And thank you for keeping us safe.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-101, declaring Duffy Lane a county road. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioner Payne. Um, Crystal Nest Development Services Supervisor for Lewis and Clark County. This morning, we have two agenda items that are actually related. Um, the first one is Resolution, um, 2024-101, declaring Duffy Lane a county road. Um, I have a little bit of magic that I'm gonna work for you this morning. Generally, I have pictures of the location and all of that. But our network is wonderful. Our county map that we have, um, that's supported by our GIS, um, folks, is absolutely amazing and gives more information about a piece of property than you can even imagine. So, this is our, this is a map off of our county road system, or our county map system. So, we're gonna go out to Canyon Creek. Um, Canyon Creek is off of Lincoln Road or Secondary 279. It comes up from the south. Um, Canyon Creek has that notable east-west, um, jog that's right on the section line. Duffy Lane is going to go to the east off of the, um, 287 headed towards Chevalier Drive. Um, I've also got a PowerPoint presentation for you. I'm gonna kind of slide that over there right now. Um, so we can take a look at some of the, some of the information that I've put on my PowerPoint, and it doesn't really show up very well, particularly, um, the column that's over on the left. Um, I was very pleased when I found this information all on one page, um, within our road records. Um, usually when the county is going to declare a county road, we, they appoint a viewer to go out and view the location where the road is going to be placed. Um, and then they have a discussion about all of tho, that information, what it's gonna take to build the road, whose property it crosses, all of that stuff. So, if you look at this document and you start on the right-hand side, which is backwards from how you would really read a document like this, but it is a four-fold document. So, we have the viewer's report. Um, this was started back in 1897 in July. Um, the next column over, um, they hold the hearing on the road. Um, they discuss the amount of, of, um, money that they're gonna pay each of the property owners for the purchase of the right-of-way that comes through their properties to go from Canyon Creek over to Chevalier Drive. And then on the far-left column is the following parties having accepted the amount of damages. And then the county thereby declares the road a public highway. So, in order to, to, um, convert the public highway language to a county road, just like we did with Valley Drive, I have a resolution before you today to make Duffy Lane a county road. Now, I had a conversation with Public Works. I've had a number of conversations with Public Works, particularly on the item that we're going to talk about next. Um, and there was a discussion about not making the whole road a county road. However, by survey, um, the county made the public highway from the highway all the way over to Chevalier Drive. This is the survey that was done in 1897 that shows the location of the road as it goes, um, along the section line and then, or the mid-section line, I should say, and then drops down and then goes over to Chevalier Drive. So, in order to not require the road to be surveyed again, we would like to utilize this survey, and I've attached it to the resolution, um, that clearly shows where the road is, which lines up with the current Duffy Lane.
Thank you very much. Questions, Commissioner? I have a couple of.
Um, of course I do. Uh, I'm trying to figure out, um, what would be the downside of declaring the entire thing a county road? Is that, is it have to do with cost of upkeep of another half-mile or? Help me with this.
Chairman, Commissioner Payne, um, I, in discussions with the folks at Public Works, particularly Kevin Horn, um, and roads in Montana were made for three things. Mining, timber, and cattle. That's why we built roads. Canyon Creek has a long history of producing cattle. Um, and the farmers and ranchers out here rely upon that road um, to be a cut across from the highway over to Chevalier Drive. And Chevalier Drive, of course, is our north-south connector from Lincoln Road up to the Seaborn Ranch and then out onto the interstate. So, um, I believe that it's a very important local road for all of the farmers and ranchers out there who utilize it. I don't see a downside to declaring it a county road. Um, I mean, clearly, based on the evidence that I've presented to you today, the county declared it a public highway. We purchased the right-of-way back in 1897. When we did this, the county actually could have a possessory interest, even though it's not a deeded interest in a county road. Um, and I, I don't see a downside into declaring it a Um, and I, I don't see a downside into declaring it a county road.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I was just going to make comment that I, I tend to generally agree with that. I'm sure there's someone that could probably find a downside. But, um, in this case, and as the, the next item coming up, um, when someone requests to do some work within that, I'll call it the right-of-way or easement or whatever it exactly is titled, um, having clear jurisdiction is important. And so by declaring it a county road, it then is clearly within our jurisdiction to, wha- whether that's, uh, give permission for a pipe to be put in it or replacing a culvert or someone wants to put a cattle, cattle guard or something like that, they clearly it would have to come through us and we have the, we get to be that gatekeeper for that very important public road that, uh, you just described. So I think it's in, it, all in all, when you weigh all the pros and cons, uh, it's, it's a pro. It's a goo- it's a positive to, uh, declare this a county road and, and to have jurisdiction on it from my perspective. Uh, that can come with other things. People requesting the county, hey, it's a county road. You should be doing this or that or whatever someday in the future. But it also clearly gives us jurisdiction to, uh, give permission or not for activities within that, that right-of-way or, or easement.
Chairman Hunhausen, that's exactly right. Generally, I've come before you to declare a county road because someone wants to abandon a road that's never been constructed. So this road clearly has been constructed, has been in use since the late 1800s and is you, in use today, and the county maintains this road.
Right. Anything else, Commissioner?
Is this a school bus route?
Chairman Payne, I probably believe it is because the Canyon Creek School is on this road.
That's kind of what I thought. It seems like really important that the county make sure this is something we can protect in the future.
And the next item will clear that up as well, so. Um, how about public comment on this? Uh, declaring Duffy Lane county road? Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay. Commissioner, is there a motion, please?
Uh, Chairman, I move we approve Resolution 2024-101 declaring Duffy Lane a county road as presented by Crystal Ness.
Second, moved in second to approve Resolution 2024-101 as presented. Further discussion, Commissioner? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is water line easement from Lewis and Clark County to the Trinity School District Number Four. Please.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioner Payne. Crystal Ness again, Development Services Supervisor. So this item is to give the school and/or Trinity School District Number Four an easement in Duffy Lane for the installation of a water line that will serve the school, um, from a well that's going to be drilled over on Chevalier's property. Um, the school has asked that they bury their water line in Canyon Creek Road because it is the highest point out here. And given all of the groundwater in this particular area, they want to make sure that that pipe is protected from freezing during the winter time. So I'm going to kind of go through a little bit and talk about the evolution of the school and how we got to where we are, um, with request in this easement. So once again, I've gone to the county roadmap. Um, this is, like I said, maintained by GIS. Um, we have some magic that it can perform, um, relative to aerial photographs. So this is an aerial photograph of the school property, and you can see that it's wholly surrounded, um, by this other piece of ground. Um, they had tried to work with these folks to get an easement for either the new drain field that was going to be required or the new well that was going to be required to be drilled, um, and could not get any, um, cooperation there. So Chevaliers own the property to the east. Um, and they have agreed to allow the school to drill a well on their property with a proper easement, and then it'll come down the road and service the school. So this is a, this aerial photograph was taken in, in '23, and it shows the school as expanded. Um, if we go back to the '21 aerial, you can see how, what's the size of the school was back then. The old drain field was located over here in this location, and the well, um, on the diagrams that I'm going to be showing you, the well is in approximately the middle of the property. The new drain field is going to be located on the west side of the property, um, which causes an incursion in the well with the mixing zone. So this is a, this is a copy of the DEQ application. This is just a portion of it that shows the school lot. You can tell by the X's around the outside, that's actually the perimeter fence. Um, here's the existing school building. Here's the building that was added onto it. This is the proposed new mound system drain field. Um, they had to expand both the septic and the well, um, for the increased capacity at the Canyon Creek School. So if we put the mound septic system over here on this side, this is the mixing zone for that effluent to mix with the groundwater. Right now, here's the well that serves the current school. So in order to have the new drain field, we're going to have to relocate that well. This is an actual copy of the whole schematic for the DEQ approval. Once again, you've got the diagram in the school parcel showing, um, where the new drain field is and the mixing zone. Here's where the new well's going to be located on Chevalier's property. There's going to be an easement to allow the water line to come up to meet Duffy Road, go down Duffy Road, and then service the school. Um, all of this was required by the Department of Environmental Quality based on the number of students they now have and the number of days per year that the students will be in attendance. They now have to be, um, considered a public water and public wastewater facility. So they will be monitored by the state. So that, um, requires all of the separation that we're now seeing. Um, this is an actual copy of the exhibit that will be attached to the easement that shows, um, the easement going down Duffy Lane. We're going to give them 30 feet. I've, they're going to work with Public Works. You need, um, an excavation permit, which will require traffic control and insurance from the contractor and a number of other things. Um, there is a number of other projects that are in the works. Um, we are also going to, there's a retracement of the school parcel that's going to occur. There's the easement with Chevalier Ranch. All of those items are going to be recorded in concert to make this whole thing come together. The DEQ approval, the easements, the resolution for the road, and then, um, the retracement survey.
Thank you. Questions? Is?
No, I don't have any questions, uh, actually. Um, Crystal Ness came in yesterday and we went over all these maps and documents. And because she knows that I just love maps and documents and, and it makes sense to me, and it looks like the right thing to do. Um, life would be easier if they had, uh, the cooperation of the Jason landowner, but we've got citizens out there at the Chevalier Ranch that say, come on, this is, we'll help with this. So thank God for them. And no, I don't have any questions.
So I just wanted to point out, I, first of all, thank you because very thorough and great explanation, always an education as well that is good for all of us that might be listening, watching today. Um, but I just wanted to point out as well that we have, um, already heavily invested in this project, if you will, uh, through our ARPA funding. There was funding specifically for infrastructure that was matched our, our ARPA funding with state ARPA funding for infra- infrastructure projects and, and Trinity School was one of the awards, uh, of that. And so parts and pieces of this project have already been, um, heavily invested in by the county. And so this gives us an opportunity to help them finish the, finish the job and complete the puzzle here. It's been quite a puzzle to ex- to expand the school and to make sure they've had updated sewer and water systems. So I don't know if you have any comment there, but.
No, Chairman, but that certainly answers a question that Candace had asked me yesterday, um, about funding for this project. And I have a, a piece of the puzzle to do, but that's great. I, I, um, alluded to Candace that I thought that there was probably ARPA funding involved. I didn't know how it was involved, but this is a very worthwhile project.
Yes, there was. So there's one category of the ARPA funding, which was specifically for infrastructure. And I think Lewis and Clark County got $2.4 million. The state got a chunk, and we could apply to have a 50-50 match on projects. And I think this project, there might have been a couple of awards, but, um, I can't remember the exact number. But somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000 has, uh, already been invested to try and help them complete this, this work of expanding the school and try to meet the needs of the kids in that area. So, um, I'm glad that we're, um, help, trying to help finish the job here by working on these details of easements and all of the, all of the things that have to be done to complete these jobs. So, thank you. Anyway.
Chairman, I think as one last comment, I think that they were waiting until late this fall to do, to drill the well, put the water line in the road because groundwater will be at its lowest point. So there's a timing matter to all of this. Um, and I believe it's going to move forward, you know, hopefully before the snow flies.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, anything else?
Nope.
All right. How about public comment on this item? Public comment? Any public comment? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the water line easement from Lewis and Clark County to the Trinity School District Number Four as presented by Crystal Ness.
Second, so I moved in second and approved the easement as presented. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda. Item number nine is an agreement to extend preliminary subdivision approval for the amended plat of lots 9A, 11A, and 101A of the Bridge Creek Estates. Mr. McNally?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Uh, Greg McNally with the Community Development Planning Department. You have before you an extension request from the applicant for the extension of the preliminary plat approval for the amended plat of Bridge Creek Project as, uh, you described, Mr. Chairman. This preliminary plat approval was granted by the Board of County Commissioners initially on September 17th, uh, 2015. We've granted two three-year extensions previously for this project. This would be our third, uh, uh, three-year extension that we're presenting for you today. This property is located east of and adjacent to North Montana Avenue, approximately a quarter mile north of Lincoln Road. This project involves, uh, 50, uh, si- lots for single-family dwelling. It was to begin, is to be completed in five phases. And, um, due to some legal actions involving the subject property, the applicant has requested extensions of this project, uh, for this preliminary plat approval of an additional three years. Our subdivision regulations do not necessarily include criteria for determining the lengths of extensions of a preliminary approval. So you'll have preliminary approval, uh, extension request lengths that will vary. Um, but generally, we'll, we'll suggest to the commission a preliminary plat approval to provide no more than a three-year extension that matches up with the initial, uh, preliminary approval that we issue subdivisions for three years. Um, so staff has prepared a three-year extension agreement for all phases of this project, and, uh, the applicant has signed that agreement, and it is in your packet, and staff is recommending approval. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Thank you very much. Any questions, Commissioner?
No.
Nor do I thank you very much for the explanation. Appreciate it. And, uh, this is a common practice for the most part. All right. How about public comment on this item? Public comment? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion, please?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agreement to extend preliminary subdivision approval for the amended plat of lots 9A, 11A, and 101A of Bridge Creek Estates as presented by Planner Greg McNally.
Second, moved in second and approved the preliminary approval extension request as presented. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to the last item on the agenda, last action item on the agenda, which is board appointments, and I'll turn it over to you, Carrie. Good morning.
Morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, we're looking at board appointment for the Airport Authority Board. Jason Davis was serving as the Joint City-County Representative on a partial term that expired September 1st of 2024 and wishes to be reconsidered. Paul Bogemeel and James McCormick also applied. Both Commissions reviewed and discussed the three applicants at the City-County Joint Work Session on September 3rd, 2024. Staff recommends that the Commissioners consider the applicants and select a candidate for the Joint City-County Representative to the Airport Authority Board to a term that will expire September 1st of 2027.
Thank you very much. Commissioner, any questions?
Um, let's, we've got, oftentimes when we're looking for volunteers for these boards, nobody stands up. And here, we've got three really good applicants. Um, however, it's my understanding that based on the past experience of Mr. Davis having served one term, that it is the custom to encourage them to run two terms so that we benefit from what they've learned in their first terms. Is that why we're, we're not taking advantage of these other two applicants?
I don't really have any knowledge of the history of that, but it sounds logical.
Well, I'm sure my very experienced chairman, who's been here for 18 years, and he knows how this stuff has been done. Andy, explain this to me.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, yes, I was going to speak to that. Anyway, so, uh, good question. Uh, typically, what, what we do and what, what happens with boards and committees is that, um, folks have an opportunity to serve up to two terms. Six years typically, they're, they're three-year terms for most of our boards and committees. And traditionally, if someone, and Mr. Davis, I would put in this category, if someone serves faithfully and well and has done a good job, and they'd like to be reappointed to their second term, there's no requirement to repo- appoint them to the second term, but it has been tradition, I'll say, uh, that if someone has served faithfully and well that we have, and they're interested in serving that second term, another three-year term, that we have, uh, traditionally granted that opportunity. We're not required to, but we, uh, traditionally do. So that's kind of where we stand now, and from all of my, uh, assessment of this, uh, situation is that we have three great candidates, but, uh, Mr. Davis is just finishing his first term. Would like to serve a second and has served well and faithfully and think has done a good job. So if we're holding to tradition, which I prefer to do, Mr. Davis would be appointed to a second term. So there's the explanation. If you need any more, I'd be happy to do it.
That's, that's pretty clear. I just, I, it just makes me feel really bad for when we've actually got people who show that they want to serve and we turn them down and.
I'll say this too, though, Commissioner, is that, uh, this is a joint appointment between the city and the county. We also have coming up, uh, very soon, I think it's in the advertising, uh, space right now. Maybe it's done, I'm not sure, but there is an appointment, uh, for a county position. And I believe that these two folks may be eligible for that as well. Um, we may have another list of, uh, applicants. So we will have opportunity to, um, determine how we move forward on that county-only appointment. So.
Okay.
We'll have more opportunity here, and it's great to have people that want to serve. You're right, you're absolutely right, and, uh, we'll keep them on our list for future appointments, hopefully. Thanks. So, anything? So, anything else?
Nope.
Question-wise, how about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Commissioner, how about a motion to appoint?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I move that we, um, approve the appointment of Jason Davis to the Airport Authority Board.
Second, moved in second to appoint Jason Davis as, uh, presented here to the, to the, uh, Airport Authority Board. And I think that term ends September one, twenty twenty-seven. Okay, anything further?
Nope.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. All right, we're at that time in our meeting where we will take public comment on any item that is under the jurisdiction of the commission, but not on today's agenda. Is there any public comment?
Mr. Chair, uh, here's Connor Fitzpatrick, Lewis and Clark County Elections, Elections Division Supervisor. Uh, more of a public comment for the public. Please, if you need to update your voter registration, please do so as soon as possible. Uh, late registration starts on October eighth, coming up quickly. So if you need to do any updates after that point, you'll have to do them in person. Up until that point, though, you can mail it to us, email it to us, drop it by in person and say hi. Uh, we just need to get those in our hands before that deadline, uh, of late registration begins. So get your updates to us, so you don't have to wait in line on Election Day. Isn't thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Any other public comment? Any other public comment this time? All right, hearing none. Thank you all very much. We will stand adjourned.